Good afternoon Pastor Owen again, welcome to our Town Hall meeting. I'm so grateful and glad that we can gather together more freely like this as restrictions are being lifted. It's just so good to see so many of you in the sanctuary today. Now at this Town Hall meeting you're going to get some updates and news about how we're going to transition into the summer and into the fall and what regathering for our church looks like in the coming months. But I want to say this, one of the areas that we're going to be focusing on, beginning this summer and going into the fall, is this idea of rebuilding a sense of connection and community as a church. As you know, this past year has been so hard because of the pandemic, because of social isolation and all of that. It's been hard for us to do life together. I know that we have our little bubble groups, but as an entire church family, we've almost forgotten what it looks like and feels like to do life together as a church family. So what we're going to do is, we're going to really try to provide opportunities and venues for our church family to come together, to reconnect, to learn how to be a community again, to learn how to be a church family again. And so to that end, our staff has been busy planning strategic and creative activities for you to be able to do just that. So as Pastor Bobby mentioned, on June 14th, which is next Monday, we're going to have our golf tournament. And again, it's not too late to sign up, whether you're a scratch golfer or a newbie that shoots over 110 like me, everyone is welcomed. I want to say this, yes, the proceeds will go toward lunches for London Town. But I think just as important is the opportunity for our church people to see one another in person again and to spend time together again and doing something fun again. And so if you play golf, or even if you don't, sign up and come out because I think it's just super important that we get to see one another. Also, on June 26th, which is a Saturday evening in the church parking lot, we're going to host our 30-year anniversary celebration. You know, it's crazy, I've been at the church for 10 years now. That's crazy too, right? 10 years? But this church has been around for 30 years. And for those of you who've been here for a long time, you know that there were some really hard and dark and difficult times that our church went through. The fact that we got to age 30 as a church is just a testament to God's faithfulness and goodness. He has treated us so much better than we deserve. We don't deserve to be here, but we're here because God is gracious and God is faithful. And it's just so right for us as a church family to get together and to thank God for all that he has done for us. And we're going to do that on June 26th. Yes, there's going to be food trucks, the food's going to be amazing, all of that, yada, yada, yada. We're going to have giveaways, all of that is fun stuff. But I think what's at the heart of it is our church family coming together to be together and to thank God together for his faithfulness. So I hope all of you can make it and you can register for this on the Planning Center. So I think that's it for me, Pastor Sam.
Thank you Pastor Owen. Good morning Christ Central! Good morning, and it's hard to believe that it's been almost exactly one year since our first Town Hall meeting that we held in June of 2020, and it's been 10 months since our last Town Hall meeting at the beginning of August. Over the past several weeks, as Pastor Owen mentioned, our pastoral ministry staff, our officers, our laid leaders have been tirelessly preparing, faithfully planning, and constantly praying about transitioning our congregation smoothly and safely into the next phases, which I'm excited to share with you in just a moment. But before I do so, I can't name them by name, but allow me to take a moment to publicly acknowledge and appreciate all of their unseen efforts, hard work, and humble dedication. Can we give a clap offering to the Lord, but also appreciate all those who have been working behind the scenes? Really proud to be part of this staff and leadership in our church community. For today's Town Hall, you'll be hearing from several of our staff with key updates, time-sensitive reports, and strategic plans for their respective ministries as we enter the summer months and as we prepare for another year of gospel-centered ministry, which kicks off at the end of August. Director Heidi, Director Sujin, and Pastor Huey will present on behalf of the children, youth, and college ministries, as well as our education, Ministry Department, and CCR, Christ Central Institute. Pastor Bobby will come back up again, will be sharing on behalf of all of our community life ministries. And then lastly, Pastor Albert will provide an update and share plans about our young adult bridges ministry. So let me begin, I just have a couple of moments here to share with you probably the biggest, most comprehensive kind of update for our entire church. It's our regathering phased plan. Over the last 15 months, our leadership has carefully followed guidelines from federal and state health experts and agencies, closely monitored state and county updates and developments, and we have consistently worked with and communicated with our sister church KCPC for each of our reopening phases. In addition to all of these sources, a combination of vaccination rates, COVID case and hospitalizations data, best practices from leading experts, and feedback from our staff and our session, and most of all, from much prayer, we have prepared and are now ready to present our church's phased transition plan, which we have called Regather Christ Central. Hopefully this chart is clear, informative, and self-explanatory. Please note that each of the categories, the ministries, elements, and the figures and the numbers within this chart were intentionally included and calculated so that we can regather in the most responsible, strategic, and comprehensive way while continuing to live out our vision, mission, and values. Allow me to highlight some key information, I'm not going to walk through everything, but just some key information, primarily focusing on our Sunday morning worship service attendance, and also our health and safety practices and protocols. Number one, our summer phase, which officially begins next Sunday, June 13th, will officially kick off. All church worship services for the entire summer, that's our historical kind of tradition at our church. And as you know, all church worship is when our children and youth worship alongside of their parents and the adults of our church for the entire service. And our Sunday maximum capacity during the summer phase, which will increase from currently, which is 147, to 250. And if you wonder where we get that number, 250 is half of the capacity, maximum capacity of our sanctuary. And then in our fall phase, which will begin at the end of August, August 29th, which coincides with our fall ministry kickoff, will double our Sunday maximum capacity to the capacity of the room, which is 500 persons. Let me mention quickly about some updates regarding masks, social distancing, screening, online registration, and check-in protocols. Let me start by sharing what will continue during the summer phase at the very least. Masks will still be required to be worn on Sunday mornings and for all ministry events hosted inside of our building, since everyone who attends these events will not yet be fully vaccinated, especially our children. Social distance best practices will continue to be followed, and everyone will still be required to answer health screening questions, primarily ones about close contact and if they're being tested for COVID when they arrive in the building. And there'll still be an official check-in process using one of our check-in kiosks for contact tracing purposes. However, here are the things that will be dropped and lifted as of next Sunday. Online preregistration for our Sunday worship services will no longer be required. And taking temperatures will no longer be part of our check-in and screening process, again, starting next Sunday. And lastly, if you know, and it's on the chart and we'll share this chart. As an important disclaimer, as noted at the very bottom of this chart, both maximum Sunday worship attendance capacity and our updated health and safety protocols are subject to change, okay? I feel like I'm a commercial, you know? That real quick, it makes all these disclaimers and so forth. But it's really, it's subject to change based on further guidance and regulations from local and state government, like our governor's executive orders and health agencies and experts. But in order for us to stay on track, on schedule, to increase our maximum capacity in our sanctuary to 500 at the end of August, it will actually be based on data as well. Our weekly average attendance leading up to that Sunday, and also a minimum number of essential Sunday ministry volunteers, which are necessary to support this higher capacity. Which leads me to my last quick announcement. As you can see, and maybe we can put the chart back up if you don't mind. As you can see from this regathering phases chart, almost all of the ministries listed below the Sunday worship category are planning to return to in-person gatherings and ministry programming in the fall. And there are even several ministries that aren't even listed. But in order to do so, every member and every regular attendee, we invite and ask them to use their God-given gifts, burdens, passions, and skills to partner together to live out our vision, mission, and values. And we completely understand that during the pandemic, many ministries had to restructure, transition to virtual, scale back, and were very limited in their ministry programs, and therefore, serving and volunteer opportunities were limited. However, praise God, this is and will no longer be the case. So in order to resource our congregation to explore the needs and discern your calling and connect with the right ministry to serve for the second half of the year, we'll be launching a volunteer recruitment campaign starting in July. We'll have an online volunteer registration page that'll provide more information and help you connect with the ministry of interest. And we're going to have a couple CC103 classes, which are designed to help discover your gifts and your talents and your passions, and also begin the process of signing you up for a volunteer ministry role. We'll offer those at the end of July for those who want to do it in a very personalized, customized way. More details are going to come about the volunteer recruitment campaign. And before I invite Director Heidi up, I can't tell you how excited and significant it is that we're regathering. Last night, I hosted something that I haven't been able to host in almost two years. My parents celebrated their 50th anniversary during COVID a few months ago and had to do it in isolation before the vaccines were rolled out. My sister and my brother-in-law, we haven't seen in almost two years. And finally, after everyone was fully vaccinated, we were able to gather for kind of a belated celebration in my home last night. And I can't tell you how much, how powerful, meaningful it was for me to be a brother, to be a son, to be a brother-in-law. To see my sister and my parents, my kids seeing grandparents and aunts and uncles. That's the picture of what I envisioned regathering as a church is. It's all these other relationships that God has uniquely designed our church to be. We could be spiritual aunts and uncles, and spiritual cousins, brothers and sisters. So I hope you're really excited to come regather as a church in a variety of ways and be a part in helping for us to do that in a fruitful, successful, and a safe way. So at this time, I'd like to invite Director Heidi to come and share with us exciting news and developments with Central Kids.
Hello, I actually cannot, I can't, I can't believe that today is actually the last day of Central Kids ministry, but we are now looking ahead into the summer. And I'm so excited because as Pastor Sam was mentioning, that we will now be regathering together starting June 13th. This coming Sunday, our children will be able to join us in the building. So excited for that, and starting from June 13th, we are going to have our Alt Church Sundays. And from Alt Church Sundays, I would love to introduce to you that during our children's Bible lesson, we are going to have a children's series. Now the pastors will have their series going on, but we will also have one for the children. And the series will be called "I Was Made to Worship." And it's very appropriate because it's time that we're going to actually gather together again into this building with our church family and that they are reminded of why they were made, they were made to worship God. So we're going to go through that series during our children's Bible lesson time, and it'll be, the details will be sent to you, to the families through emails, so please be on the lookout for that. And while we're gathering on Sundays now, we would like to gather on other days, right? Because it's been a while, you know, we're talking about spiritual families, spiritual aunts and uncles, and other moms, fathers, dads, like everybody gathering together in fun ways. We're planning on what we're going to be calling a summer hangout. So join us on these dates for summer hangout dates. They're going to be furry, fuzzy, splashing fun days, okay? So please be on the lookout for some more details about that. And for the next, I'm going to be done with Central Kids, I'm going to now invite Director Sujin up.
Director Sujin here to give Central Youth updates. I know it's been a really long virtual year for Central Youth, and so I'm really, really excited to announce that in this summer, we're going to be having Friday Night Lives or FNLs all in person. And we're going to be doing half of them here at church and half of them off-site. We're going to have fun field trips, I get to drive the van full of students again, it's going to be fun and exciting. So the dates are June 18th, July 9th, July 23rd, and August 13th. And so because they are in person, we are going to be having registration for all of them. And so be on the lookout in your inboxes, you will be getting emails with links to all of those. And just as a reminder to both our Central Kids and Youth families, if you haven't registered for the fall for the new ministry year yet, make sure you register so that we can plan accordingly.
We can't do it!
Why? Why not?
Because we need volunteers!
Oh no, we don't have enough leaders for the coming fall!
I mean, we can't have a fall until we have our volunteers in place!
What are we going to do?
You know what? We're out of Town Hall meeting! This is the best place to ask, don't you think?
You're right, you're so smart Director Heidi. So for all of our members and our new members, if you want to regather and recommit yourself to the church this summer, what better way to do it than to serve for Central Education?
That's right.
If you love children and youth, and you want to invest in the next generation, and like Pastor Owen said, you love gathering in small groups and teaching Bible study, how meaningful that is, how powerful that is? We are looking for more volunteers, specifically for Central Youth. I need a handful more volunteers to lead our middle and high school students through Bible study, to love them, to care for them, to eat meals with them, and to just shepherd them. Sounds so fun, right?
Oh yes!
So we are going to be having a volunteer training together in the beginning of the month of August, and so we would love to have our volunteer list complete in July.
Yes, and for Central Kids, we are looking for teachers for our babies and our early childhood preschool children.
And who doesn't love babies?
Well, I know, right? And those are the ages where seeds are being planted and being watered weekly, right? So it's so important to have volunteers who can speak about how much God loves them every single week. So please, again, sign up, we're going to have the registration open in July. At the same time, please contact us, contact us to let us know that you want to join our teams.
Yeah, or if you're at church, stop us in the hallway, tell us, "We want to volunteer, we loved your announcement, and we're going to commit." We will happily add you to our roster.
Yes, thank you.
So I think Pastor Huey is going to come up and give some CCM announcements.
You guys are the best, the best. Church family, I hope you are moved and compelled and just a little bit guilted into serving in our Central Kids and Central Youth ministries. Just kidding about the guilt part, but moved and compelled for sure. Central College students, welcome back, we've missed you. And we're so glad that we get to spend the summer together. And for us as well, reconnecting and regathering is going to be our theme. And at the very least, we believe that there are three key ingredients to successfully and meaningfully regather and reconnect. First is good food, we need good food. Second, good company. And third, the good word, right? So our summer is going to be planned around those three key ingredients. One thing that I want to, two things that I want to share with you is, this summer, we're going to kind of focus on regathering and reconnecting around summer luncheons. So dates are on the screen, on those four Sundays throughout the summer, we're going to connect over good food. We have 16 of our young adult volunteers, ready to welcome you back, ready to meet you, ready to share stories with you, listen to how you've been, and it's going to be surrounded by good food and good company. So, and especially if you are joining us for the very first time, if you're in the area, you're a new college student in the area, you don't really have a home church, or you're looking for a church to connect to, we would love to meet you, we would love to share time with you and fellowship with you, just so that you can get to know us, get to know the life of our church. So that's summer luncheons, four weeks in the summer. And secondly, we're going to do a summer teaching series. We're going to read and reflect on the Book of Colossians together on Friday nights, those are the dates there for you. And again, like, we want to be not just a community that kind of enjoys one another, but we want to learn to grow, we want to learn to enjoy God's Word together around community. We want you to feel like you are surrounded by good brothers and sisters, but all digging into God's Word and the gospel together. So we would love to have you join us this summer. And second update quickly that I want to share with you is, I get to kind of serve as kind of the lead person for Christ Central Institute for our church. And this summer, we're going to be offering a six-week class, reading and reflecting on the Book of First John. And Director Sujin Park is going to be leading that class, and she is a passionate Bible teacher, and it's going to be worthwhile for you to just to sit under her leadership. You're going to be with other brothers and sisters that are going through the same book with you. This study is going to include just looking at the context of the letter, themes that are presented through the Book of First John, and we're just going to think about together what it means for the Book of First John to impact our lives and impact the way that we love and serve Jesus and the church. So registration for that class is online, next week is the last Sunday to register, so hope and pray that you will join us then. How about, I think Pastor Bobby is next with Community Life.
Just wanted to take this time to welcome Director Heidi and my brother as a member after five years of intention. What a day! So for those of you who have been regular attenders for 15 years, we are ready for you to become members and volunteer and serve. Beloved church, this has been a tough year for all of us, but like the red-eyed cicadas who spent time grueling years in the ground, waiting to emerge from the ground, we made it through some tough stretches that probably felt dark at times and alone at times. But like the cicada, it's time to emerge from our isolation and come to the light. That's right, I'm talking to you! Like the cicada, we have a purpose to live out, and it's never separate from community. For the cicada, there is no multiplication in life for the next generation without getting through those tough years. And much the same, I believe we have the potential to be a healthier church after this pandemic. A much more intentional as a church in our purpose and vision to obey God's calling for our lives. But as Scripture tells us, we cannot forsake the meeting with one another. We were never meant to live and journey this Christian life alone. Pastors around the country have seen that those who have actually persevered and grew during the pandemic were those who had a small community where they shared with one another the dissonance that they were feeling and felt heard and loved in this messiness that they felt. They were pointed back to the gospel and the loving arm of their Savior, and it gave them just enough strength to not give up. So there is a great, great need for us to reconnect as a church. So we need your help, this is where my pleading begins. We desperately need CG leaders of old and new to come out of retirement. Some of you who retired years ago and said, "I'm never doing it again," it's time to shake off the dust and join us again. And those of you who have never done it, it's time to start. We need you, we need to build community, and we can't do it if there are no community groups available. So don't be scared, be the cicada and join us. We need you to emerge and come to the light. So please make it your intentional priority to lead the groups, but also sign up for groups. Central men, central women, CGs, and if you would like to be part of the journey group, we have a waitlist for you to join so that the leaders who are currently praying for members need you to get on that list so that you can join. The second announcement that I have is an update in women's ministry. Director Karen did an amazing job of loving the women of our church, but she has gone now. And so I am asking the women of Christ Central to pray with me for a new team of leaders who would like to lead the women's ministry at our church and to work with me to build a ministry where many women can join and find life. So if you would like to be part of that team, please consider it, pray for it, be the cicada, and give me an email, okay? Thank you. I'd like to invite Pastor Albert, cicada brother.
Thank you. All right, all right. Pastor Albert, I just want to give a quick worship and bridges announcement. First of all, from the worship team, thank you for coming to church. It's so nice hearing people's voices and singing together. I'm going to be honest, leading worship during COVID, especially when there was nobody in here, was a little rough. Singing to the camera and trying to like, you know, get people to sing, but when there's nobody here, it was kind of rough. But today was amazing, and so thank you guys for coming. And I just want to encourage those who are watching online, do what you need to do, get your vaccines. We're safe here, everyone's wearing masks, and so come join us. There's something special that happens when we're gathered together and just being together to sing to the Lord. So I want to encourage you guys in that. Two quick things from the worship team. One, shout out to our worship members who are on break. I would like for you guys to come back. But you know, if you're able to, I know some people had babies and stuff like that, but yeah. So a quick shout out to our guys on break and our ladies. And also, we are also, secondly, looking for new members. We have an audition form online, but we really need some more members as we come back. Especially keyboardists. This is the biggest conundrum that I have through our church time. Keyboardists are so hard to find, but we're, most of us are Asian in here, and that's the first instrument that our parents teach, or make us learn. And I know there's some keyboardists in here. And so maybe you've been hiding like the cicadas, I don't know. But we need more instrumentists and singers, especially keyboardists, so if you play, please audition. But also, we need sound, media, and video, and for that, there's no audition, you're in! So that's the easiest way to serve our worship team for sure, and we need help in that area. Okay, lastly, a quick bridges update. We're gonna, I guess, kind of kick off just our summer with one big bridges barbecue. Wow, that looks really good right now. Okay, so this is, you know, Pastor Bobby talked about cicadas a lot, but then yesterday I heard that Central Education had this barbecue outdoors, and apparently a cicada landed on Pastor Huey's lip, and he almost ate it. So I'm going to, Pastor Peter and I, we're going to make a little audible, and we're not going to go outside, we're not going to go to Westmore Park. We're going to have our barbecue indoors at Christ Central, safe from the cicadas. But, so please note, we'll send some more information out, but the barbecue will be not at the park, but here at church. All right? Awesome. And that's June 12th. I think that's it, let me close us in prayer, and then guys can enjoy the rest of your Sunday. Heavenly Father, thank you for our church, thank you for all the amazing things that are happening in the ministries, and also just as we come back and as a church, we pray for leaders and servants to arise, Lord, and that we know that you will continue to do your work through just Christ Central. Thank you for, even as we look forward for the 30th anniversary, we thank you for our church. Thank you for everyone here, and pray a blessing upon the rest of our Sunday in your name we pray, amen.
Just, I know we've talked about reconnecting, regathering, but now we need to exit as soon as possible, okay? Because we are turning over this room for the service that follows. So I know if you want to hang out in the cicada-free patio, okay? Please hang out in the patio, but we do need to exit the sanctuary. Thanks for worshiping and being with us for the Town Hall meeting, have a great Sunday, we love you guys.